Everyone, we'll call the September 5th, 2017, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Johnny Dyed if he would lead us in an invocation and pledge.
Get on the stand, please. This morning, we have Mr. Carlos Robinson, Jr. This young man came to my basketball camp a couple of weeks, and during the basketball camp, was getting ready to start a prayer, he started camp off with a prayer. This young man came up to me and said, "Let me lead the prayer." I'm like, "Wow, that's amazing." Then after he said the prayer, it was excellent, you will see here in a minute, then after he finished the prayer, he looked up and said, "My daddy is teaching me how to pray." And he got his father with him today, Mr. Carlos Robinson, Sr., and I want to thank him, the Robinson family, but to show you how leadership in the family, and when a father is teaching a young man how to pray, we know there's hope for our young men in the community. So, we'd like to call it Mr. Carlos Robinson, Jr., and he's going to lead us in the pledge also after the prayer.
Father God in heaven, thank you for, thank you for the president, that he makes good decisions for our country, thank you for the mayor, the policemen, the firemen, and the city council. And thank you for everybody in the world, and for everybody in Texas that got, and pray for everybody in Texas that got hurt by Hurricane Harvey, and please pray for the builders that, 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 so they can build back Texas that, that destroyed houses. In His name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know he's got to go back to school, but hold him, hold him in place there just a second. We've got a special presentation for the council. Back to you, one second. Yep. I don't know if you have one of those fancy shirts that holds them, please. You're going to have to bag them up. Right there, you've got a set of cup ones. Special field, city of Texas.
Thank you.
Well.
Thank you.
Don't let daddy take it from you. Okay, Nate, I think you can show all council members present for today's meeting. And item four is the approval of minutes. August 3rd, 2017, City Council meeting, council members received a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, if there are none, then we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation to public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to be heard on any item under new business, if you would be kind enough to let me know, we'll be sure to call you up and let you address the council. We have no proclamations this morning. We do have one recognition for Representative NAACP, Marshall Brooks. Marshall, if you're here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, come on up. I should be kind enough, just for the record, to introduce yourself, so they have a record of your...
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it. Hold on. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Morning.
St. Louis City Council members, my name is Reverend Marshall Brooks. I'm the first vice president of the NAACP, and I'm here this morning to discuss criminal First of all, I'd like to thank also our Police Department Chief Weiser, I see that we have, working with body cameras for our police officers, that will keep them safer, keep our community safer, and of course, it will also cut down on lawsuits and so forth for our community. So, we also appreciate that, and your chief Weiser. Our address this morning is on criminal justice reform and the problems in our communities. Many of our young people are being, or have been arrested on charges of felonies, which may or may not be mandated by the state guidelines for a small amount of substance abuse, marijuana. Some of our neighboring municipalities, Nashville, Knoxville, Memphis, are working with a procedure, are working with a plan that would make a small amount of marijuana, such as a half amount, half an ounce or less, rather than to be a felony or conviction, but under discretion of our Police Department and our Sheriff to issue a DAT or death appearance ticket, which they would get, in subsequent, to get a fine, or maybe community services or something such as that, rather than to have a conviction on their records and to, should I say, carry them over into their neighborhoods where they would have a conviction, where they would have a problem with them getting jobs, getting housings, and so forth and so on. So, we're trying to work with that, we're trying to work with our, with our elected officials to see if we can come up with something that would be better, would better serve our neighborhood. I think that it would be a disservice to a person if they get a conviction or be arrested for a small amount of drugs, marijuana, especially when they're planning on taking it home to enjoy within the confines of their home or whatever, rather than to just arrest them, put them in jail, which would actually serve no purpose whatsoever. I mean, we know, I'm quite sure all of us know right now, that incarceration in the United States just do not work. United States incarceration population right now, in our great country, is the largest in the world. We have more people incarcerated in the United States than any other country, any other country in the world. We have to do something better than that. We know it's not working, it hasn't worked, and, let me get my notes together. It hasn't worked, and it has to be another way. Mr. Mayor, I think that, I believe we sent you and the council some literature on this from different, different municipalities. The proposal will allow our Police Department and our Sheriff's Department to operate within their discretion, of course, on matters such as that, should they arrest a person, or should they issue the person a DAT ticket. So, that's our position on that. We believe a finer community service would be better, would better serve our communities, and, so this is something, Mr. Mayor, that we would like you and the City Council to consider in moving forward with this problem. Our criminal justice reform, death appearance ticket will also help to relieve, and we complain all the time about our crowded situation in our, in our penal institutions, to, to give a ticket, it would relieve some of that overcrowdedness, and then it would also help the city of Jackson as far as the ticket and community services. It would also teach some of our people what it is to volunteer. Community service is a great thing, and driving around Jackson, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So, we would, we would, I'm going to say beseech you and the council to consider that in moving forward. I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We, we believe that everybody, everybody deserves a second chance, and I think you feel the same way, too. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks, for the effort that you've put into this issue. Any, any questions or comments in the council?
Mr. Chairman, Reverend, good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Would you explain the concept of DATT once again?
A DAT ticket.
Yeah, what does that mean?
A death appearance ticket. The officer, the Police Department, our Sheriff's Department, has the discretion then, if it's feel that, within their guidelines, which of course, it will always be within their guidelines on what they do, have the discretion to, to issue a citation rather than an arrest. A citation, then they'll have to come back to court and pay a fine, and they can go home. Especially with our first-time offenders, many of our first-time offenders are going through this, and, I mean, we have a lot of, I know I have young kids, and we all, I believe, have young kids who make errors. We've all made mistakes, and if this is a first-time offender, then I don't feel that that person should be locked up, or should be arrested, or should have a criminal felony on their records, when they could get a death appearance ticket, because a death appearance ticket will also help our city. So, I think that's a good thing, and I don't want, you know, we don't want to get to the point where we're just giving that for the financial, but I'm quite sure we wouldn't do that, but we just think that that would help our city, and it would help the individual. We complain about jobs and so forth, we complain about education, if our children are arrested and locked up and so forth, nine out of 10 times, they lose their job, they lose their, their opportunity for education, and then an arrest does not only penalize the person, but it also penalizes the family and the community. And we are working toward having a better family structure. So, to have a better family structure, we need both parents in the home, we don't need one incarcerated for having a half ounce of marijuana.
Okay, any other questions from council, Mr. Brooks?
I have a couple of questions. Are you saying the police officer would have the option of considering it to be a felony or not?
No, that is, that is not what I said, no.
Okay, I, I didn't think that was what you were saying.
No, that is not what I said. I said, I said, we would like to leave it up to our capable, capable, capable police officers to, if it's a first-time offender with a small amount of drugs, like such as a half an ounce or less, because I think they're working on some proposals now in different cities around Tennessee also, to make a, an arrest or to issue a death appearance ticket. Now, if this is a first-time offender who went out in the street and made a mistake, and oftentimes, you know, you, you spray, you, well, in my day, you, you give him a kick in the pants, and you say, "Don't do that," and then when you go home to your parents. And the majority of the time, that person turned out to be an upstanding citizen, a good person.
Okay, the other question I had was, state law quite regularly overrides local law? Have y'all researched to know whether or not this would be a local law that would be able to pass?
Well, yes, we have, we're doing that, that's in the process right now. Now, we've realized that the state law now is working with, are working with that, but many of the local law officials, such as in Memphis, in Nashville, in Knoxville, and in, in many of the other states around the, around our country, are working to get that under a state, under the guidelines where the city itself can make that decision. So, that's what we're working on, because right now, I understand that this, that this is a state mandate, but we are trying to work at where the city can make that decision on a first-time offender, to make a decision whether to arrest that person or to give them a DAT ticket.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one question or a statement. Have you talked at all to the school systems, you know, now we have zero tolerance, and I think that's probably a state mandate, but I'm not sure. You know, in, in schools, if they have marijuana at school, then they're automatically kicked out?
I, I've...
That might be another avenue for you to pursue.
I've been familiar with that zero tolerance around the country for many, many, many years. I believe that came under the Ronald Reagan era or something like that.
Been around a while, yeah.
Zero tolerance. I don't think zero tolerance should be applied in every instance. We have had children who has, went to school and have a pencil or something in their possession, and because of zero tolerance, they've been suspended from schools and so forth. So, I think, again, with the policemen making, having, using their own discretion, whether I should do this, whether this is a good person or not, whether this person deserved another opportunity or not. And I think that that would be, would work to the benefit of all of us involved, rather than to say, "Oh, well, we're going to give this person a felony, a kick in the butt, where they can't serve society at all." So, I think that it should be left up to the discretion of our Police Department, of our Sheriff's Department, where they could make that decision. Again, I'm reiterating, especially on first-time offenders.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chief.
Yes.
I haven't read this paperwork, so I'm not familiar with it, but I just want to make the council aware, we, we currently issue a misdemeanor citation for simple possession of marijuana already, so they have to appear in court. Now, there are some factors. If the individual does not have the proper identification, or they're operating a motor vehicle and they're under influence, that could affect their arrest. But if you're, you know, if you encounter a police officer, whether it be call for service or whatever, and you're in possession of a small amount of marijuana, which meets the statute, then we do currently issue a misdemeanor citation and a little arrest.
Okay, thank you, Chief, thank you for clarifying that part. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for your appearance.
I appreciate you, Chief Weiser, for...
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council. Again, thank you.
Okay, item eight is first reading's proclamation. Yes, Councilman Brooks has an announcement while we're in that process.
Very quick, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
And thank you, Council, good morning. September is library card signup month, a time when the Jackson-Madison County Library joined with the American Library Association and public libraries nationwide to make sure that every student has the most important school supply of all, a free library card. I have, again, partnered with the library this year to help promote this event here in Jackson-Madison County. Today's libraries aren't only a place of quiet study, but also creative and engaging community centers where students can collaborate using new technologies or just relax with peers. Our library offers access to a variety of print and digital resources, including eBooks and databases, that can be accessed in person or in line. And I'm proud to partner with Ms. Harris, who's doing such a great job at our library. Throughout the course of the month, students will be encouraged to sign up for a library card. We were so proud, last year, we signed up over 700 children here in Jackson-Madison County. You are cordially invited to attend a kickoff event tonight from 5:00 to 7:00 at the library. A proclamation will be presented, refreshments will be served, and storytime reading will be held. Also, all who sign up during September will be eligible to win a free Kindle Fire. I'm proud to work with the library to promote literacy in our community. Studies show that children who are read to at home and who use the library perform better in school. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Harris, you're here, aren't you? Congratulations to you, thank you for your hard work. We also have one member of the library board here, Dr. Charles Baldwin is here. Anyone else on the library board here, just wanted to recognize them. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Item eight is first reading, we have none, second readings, consideration of ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Cedar Street running between McCawett Street and Talbot Street, submitted by Richard Barber, TAMB of Jackson, Tennessee. Council has handled that on first reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion for approval, a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, we have a, a second reading, really, I guess you consider, a third reading of an ordinance, consideration of ordinance to amend the official municipal code, City of Jackson, Title 15, Chapter 12, registration of vehicles. We fail somehow to get a public notice out on that, so we'll need to have a public hearing on this particular reading. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing to see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Have a motion, second? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
This is, the, the next item on new business, a couple of them, is just to remind the council that our next meeting, not this meeting, the next meeting, is the deadline for studying the salary of the, of the council and mayor, and, yes.
I'd make the motion that we not, appoint a committee. The city has other business right now, and my salary is comfortable, the people are doing me a service, and I'm glad to be able to do a service for them, and I make the motion that we not even consider a committee for the assistant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, that will allow 18 months prior to the 2023 election for the next opportunity to study those, did you include the mayor's salary in that? Would you, would you mind?
Yeah, I'll include the mayor's salary.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion, the second, to, to disregard the committee for this, this particular period, any discussion? We have, do we have a second on that? We have a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Okay, and again, council, the only reason that was on the agenda is to make you aware that our next meeting would be the deadline for that. Item three, no, item two, I'm sorry, selection of a committee to review charter private act. We have about 10 items in our current charter, which we need to probably take a look at at some point. We can do this at the, at the next meeting, I just wanted to make y'all aware. The charter review committee consists of five, plus the city attorney, one member is the vice mayor, one city resident, eligible voter selected by the council or recommended by the vice mayor, three city residents selected by the mayor, and then, of course, the city attorneys. So, that's how that particular committee is structured. So, Councilman Brooks, you will, if we pursue this and go ahead and have established the charter review committee, you'll be a member of that, plus one resident whom you will recommend to the council, and I'll have three eligible voters ready to recommend to council at the next meeting. So, is there a motion that we go ahead and pursue? Again, there are about 10 items in the charter. One is inspection of vehicles, which we have never done and probably don't intend to do, but it's a requirement, so we need to look at smaller issues like that. Is there, is there a motion to...
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to establish the committee. You all know the committee structure, so, no discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item three is consideration of agreement between the State of Tennessee, TDOT, CSX Corporation, the City of Jackson, Tennessee, for the closure of Short Street Railroad Highway Grade Crossing in Jackson, Tennessee. I think we just have an agreement to accept that closure and accept payment for it, right? Okay. Council has a copy of that information, if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them. Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, a second, discussion, council, please vote. Thank you, Nate.
And the vote is unanimous.
Consideration of resolution to approve the consolidated annual performance evaluation report to CAPER for 2016, 2017, unless enough, you've come up.
Resolution is. Senator's question.
Not your turn. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, what we have for you this morning is a resolution to approve our CAPER or consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which is due to HUD no later than 90 days after our program year end, which was June 30th. So, our report is due to HUD no later than September the 30th. The CAPER is basically a report on our accomplishments as they pertain to our annual action plan goals and activities for the year. We, per our citizen participation plan, we had our 15-day public review period, we had our public meeting where we presented the report to the public, as well as we presented it to the Jackson Housing Authorities Board of Commissioners for their recommendation of a submittal to you all. We have three funding sources that we utilized during the program year, that was the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Homeless Grant. With these three funding sources, we budgeted a total of $898,796. We expended with these three grants a total of $903,583. The expenses slightly exceeded the budget due to prior-year housing activities, which we carried forward and expended during the program year. With that $903,000, we were able to serve 297 low-income individuals and families with public service activities such as our youth programs and our housing services. We provided rehabilitation and accessibility modifications to 25 housing units, and with our Emergency Solutions Grant, we provided 701 individuals with homeless shelter prevention services and recovery housing activities. The total CDVG and home funds expended approximately 45% went to housing activities. Any questions on the report?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to convey to Mrs. Face and to Mr. Higgins that you all are doing a fine job with respect to the CDVG money.
Thank you.
We know it's getting thin, it's getting short, but you all are pepping out a lot of people with respect to housing and grants and to the youth services.
Thank you.
And it conveyed to Mr. Higgins that all those phone calls have not been in vain. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of resolution, properly, second, discussion?
I have a question, Mayor, if I could. This is, and again, I echo Councilman Buchanan about the work of JJ. This is kind of a policy question, and we've discussed home funds and CDVG funds. Going forward, have you heard from the administration where those cuts are going to be? I had heard that home funds would be cut completely.
Well, currently, it looks as though they're going to keep the funding levels the same.
Okay.
Yeah, for CDVG and home.
Going forward, for the next fiscal year?
The next fiscal year.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's my question.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussions? Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is consideration of contract for polypropylene pipe. That would be plastic pipe, getting awfully technical in your description.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, bids were received on the polyethylene pipe, and the low bidder was Williams Equipment. They are a Jackson, a local company. We would ask that you make this award based upon unit pricing.
Is there a motion for approval of a contract?
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item six is consideration of contract for roundabout construction.
Yes, Ford Construction Company was the low bidder on the roundabout, and it was We'd ask that you would approve this contract.
Is there a motion for approval of the contract for the roundabout, being a state and federal project?
So move.
We have a motion, it's a second?
Second.
Have a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor, two voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
While we're on construction, just informed the council and 10 days this morning that Delta Contracting Company has awarded the state bid for the work on the interstate, and also Casey Jones Village Interchange. That would cause the demolition of bridges, both at the bypass and at Highland, correction of the U-turn at Casey Jones Village, and six-lining the bypass, 66, roughly 66 million dollars, one of the largest, it is absolutely the largest project to take place within the city and, and infrastructure improvements. Item seven is budget amendments. Do you still not have any, Ms. Powell?
Any.
That is amazing.
Ready to go, Karen?
Amazing. Okay, item nine, eight, I'm sorry. Okay, invoices over $10,000.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Before we adjourn, we certainly want to make note and express our sympathy to Councilman Charles Rahm and, and the philosopher's mother, wonderful member of our city for so many years, a great musician and great woman, and we appreciate her and extend our sympathies and prayers to Charles and all his family. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.